This conference will now be recorded.
Call to order this special work session on January 13th, 2025. 6:30 PM meeting called to order. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? If not, all to accept.
All move to accept. Agenda is written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Norman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
All right. Sorry, I need Stephanie note here. And it was Webb and Norman?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I'm doing two jobs and not so good. Okay.
Definitely you.
I don't make her come if there's nothing, no minutes for her to take. It's kind of a waste of her time and the city's resource. So she's like, I care if I don't get to say.
Sometimes she does though.
Yeah, sometimes if there's, if it's like we're, you guys are going to have a lot of back and forth discussion, she will because it's painful to listen to the minutes and try to do it for the tape. So typically on these meetings, they started as like a evaluation of me. That has kind of changed. We only do that now once a year unless there's some big problem going on, which we haven't had, but it's, these meetings are a work session. And then could go into executive session if we needed to, like if you guys wanted to tell me I was doing something wrong privately. But we really just do one annual evaluation. So we do these quarterly to keep you guys updated. Cause not all the projects are on your agenda at council meetings and you might want to know or see, make sure I'm moving something forward. So typically these, I present this to you with updated notes, updated who's completed, the color coding shows you where it's at. Who's, who it's with basically, the committee, council staff. And then today I have three kind of little homework thing because there's some areas we need council direction. We've kind of run out of the process we were doing with streets. They're all now at fair. So I need to discuss some things with you guys. Work on before budget, kind of get things, it seeds planted in your head and ideas. So when we get to budget, we can have discussions about it. So typically I just start and go down and update you guys and you ask me questions as we go along. The rating is the rating that the council put on those items when they most recently ranked them. So basically each council member is asked to rank it and then we combine those averages and that's helps me so that if number 14 is your pet rock, but the group has put number one. I was getting a lot where counselors wanted one specific thing and that's all they talked to me about. And it wasn't a group kind of consensus of what everybody wanted the order to be. So I was trying to spin all these plates and not doing a good job because they were falling because I was trying to do what everyone wanted instead of a list or an order. This is what we came up with. So our, as you can see, two, three, four, five, six got completed.
Oh yeah.
So we just have number one and number seven at the top now as far as the order. Cameras at Spencer. So we got Blue Mountain when they came on and brought fiber. They donated seven cameras for Spencer Park and they're going to come set them up. My electrician needs to pick the pole and Mitch needs to install the pole. So I pounded the electrician again. What, if this is the camera, I send them all the data. If this is the camera and this is the wire that comes off of it, how, how big of a pole do I need to get them all in there? So we're working on that, but that's our number one project right now.
How tall of a pole is it?
It's 20.
Oh, so it's up there always.
Yeah. And it's kind of centered in the, just kind of by the roadies. It comes off the junction box right at the skate park and there's the roadies right there. So it's kind of that way and it aims. And then there's a couple that are going to, cameras that are going to be put like on the snack shack. So, so basically their camera map covered, the arrays covered the whole, or where the majority of our assets are. You know, the field, if someone's going to go hobnob out there in the snow, we're going to see them on somebody else's camera. I don't need to worry about it. So. Those are coming and actually next Tuesday, I'm having lunch with Joe Frenell, who's the president of Blue Mountain, who brought it out to us. And he was out here when they started signing people up. They are thinking they want to do another kind of campaign and try to get more customers and they want, he called, he wants to go to lunch to talk about community projects that are going on that they could participate in, which I told him about the Legion roof. If they wanted to, you know, I kind of was giving him ideas like come sponsor bingo night and have two big rounds that are going to have these prizes. It'll draw more people into bingo, which will give them more. And maybe they let you set up a sign up for Blue Mountain table at bingo. You provide a couple of big prizes for a couple of the rounds or a couple of cash prizes and like everybody kind of wins. So we're going to talk about ideas of how they can get more people hooked up to them. All right. So that's good. Any questions on the cameras other than get it done? Hey, two, three, four, five, six, seven. That's pretty good.
Oh, Joseph, will there be some over by the restrooms?
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
Couple on the actual structures and then the pole.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
We just need one pole or we need several poles?
One pole.
Okay.
And it has to, and we have pretty much base already designed of what, we're just going to copy the flagpole base at the cemetery. It'll be overkill, but who cares? It's already designed and Mitch can just put it in. And then, yeah, it'll have the bolts coming out of it, just like that one. And then we'll just mount the pole. And the junction box is right there. So it's just a little bit of conduit for the electrician.
So how many cameras are going to be on the pole?
I think there's five on the pole and two on other structures to get the other arrays.
Okay.
So that's moving forward and just pounding like to get out here and do it. Lake bathroom. So the whole lake bathroom got upgraded. The last thing that has not been finished is the roof. Basically the fascia boards, the roof comes down and they put the fascia boards too close to the end. So those rotted. And so then they kind of start rotting the rafters, the butts of the rafters going up. So basically we're pulling off the metal because it's a snap kind. So we're sliding out all those pieces when it's good weather. Cutting off that, putting a new one with false rafters, just going up to the building. And then just having look like rafters come out of it and then redo the roof. But the floors got done, the painting got done, new sinks and everything, new mirrors. I think now our last, our two last bathrooms that are kind of not upgraded are Hawkins and the snack shack. But snack shack really just has ball field play. So it's not really a big touristy use though. And it's in not bad condition. It's just not fresh like the rest of them.
So do these baths, do they get hit pretty hard with like?
Yes.
Trashed?
Trashed or people just decide to make Tim's life hard and put crap in the toilets and yeah. Graffiti, set the paper towel holders on fire, like they wave their hand. So a big pile of paper towels comes to the ground. They light it on fire and it goes up inside the mechanism and burns all of the, so we, uh, we used to, they used to steal the batteries. Till I had a fabricator do a bar so they can't jimmy the thing open and get the batteries out. But it's just, everything just has to be super, I mean, well, like today, or even when Dale got the ramps in at the lake. And someone spray painted on the top of the railings of the ramps going into the dock.
I used to.
Yeah. So Tim's out there and he's like, it's wet. I can't get the stripper to work. And so he was mad. So he waited till it was dry. But it's just, we're just chasing vandalism.
Put the cameras up down there.
Right.
Well, we figured five to six grand a year we were spending.
Yeah.
In vandalism.
Spencer. Yeah, Spencer for sure. Cause they said, they said it, they set a whole bunch of stuff. That was a year of like four fires that they had set. The spray painting all everywhere. They went all in the play shed and spray paints.
Tearing Spencer's off the walls.
Yeah.
The vigil.
Yeah. It's just unfortunate.
Has that slowed down? It seemed like there was a wave.
Yes.
And with kids back at school and catching the main culprits of kind of.
Yeah. We had like four kids in the juvenile justice court that I had to go testify against. And then they had to pay like either restitution or they were kicked out of the parks for six months, could only go with an adult, like all the. But it's kind of just frustrating because we have a lot of stuff to do. I don't, I'd rather not be in county courts testifying against an 11 year old.
Yeah. It's taking money away from us.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. And you never, and you hardly ever get it back. Right?
Don't.
I mean, cause they're like, what, can this kid be, you know, reeducated or they want, and I'm like, okay, the next time I do something, I'm like, I just want cash. But the way it is.
I think the cameras are really going to kind of be the icing on the cake.
Yeah. And I think it'll just deter because the first person that you get.
Let's say shimmy up the pole and knock them off or something. We'll grease the pole.
Yeah. Well, that's what we were talking about. Sailor was power washing the building and she saw someone's put in rock climbing.
The nuts?
Yeah. And she's up there on the extension ladder, power washing the, someone spray painted F U C K across the front of the concrete building, 30 feet tall.
Oh my word.
So Casey and Sailor spent the day power washing it off so that it wouldn't say the big F word in the park. But she's like, yeah, dad, someone's using this to repel. That's probably how they painted up the tall part. They probably threw something that, a grapple or something and then.
Fold them down?
Just never ending. So hopefully those two should be done, you know, this by the end of spring. Once we have a little bit of good weather and they get a pole. Uh, the streets improvement plan execution. So this is kind of ongoing and it's part of what this second discussion will be with. The streets improvement plan, we started probably nine years ago. Trying to hit the small cities allotment is where we get most of our money from ODAS for communities under 5,000 people. You can apply for $250,000. Now there are, there are processes every other year. So 25 will be an application year, 26, we would get funded and do the work, 27 application, 28. We found a loophole and we got really good at doing it quicker than that and getting 250 every year and they don't like that. So they switched up, but we got all our, hey, all our streets are in fair conditions. So it worked. They're like, this isn't how it's supposed to be.
They will be in fair condition.
They will be after this next round. Yeah. So, um, logging the dump property, that one's, the two that are at council are kind of new. And maybe need us to sit down and have a work session of what Dale's kind of knows about the logging of that property there. What the access would be with, you know, he knows all this stuff. Kind of sit down as council and direct staff. We want to move on this in this timeline, whatever. We haven't had that discussion. We know all of it, but we haven't, they haven't directed me yet. So those two, I think maybe we set a work session at a future date where we kind of go over that stuff. And so I know what you guys are wanting. Louisiana stormwater master plan. So this one I put, I lengthened, it was 24, 25, but it's really bigger than that. Because as the builders build up there, we're trying to push Andy, who's building most of the property up there. He has probably 30 some lots left, um, to do a bigger system. We were having him treat his stormwater and do like, he has one little swale that's right on Louisiana. But as he builds all these blocks, we're like, take one of your properties that's in the wetland, make that your system and get it all there. So we don't have a whole bunch of swales that when those people are gone, that's going to be an us problem. Let's just do a bigger system. So Louisiana, we're paying attention and every house that's developed has to put in their part. And we're trying to get him to go to that bigger system. We could still have that swale, it go through that swale to the bigger system. That's not going to hurt us, but we don't want swale after swale after swale. So that's what that one is, but I gave it a.
Can you do that in a wetland? Can you take a wetland lot and make a bio swell more?
You can do treatment right before it gets to the wetland. So the treatment of the swale is treating it a little, it's percolating, right? The plants are filtering. You do like a, kind of like we did on weed. We have the planter strips that are the swales in the planting strip, and then that goes straight to the mahalum. That's considered okay treatment. And for his, it's really stormwater from roofs. It's not, if we did stormwater on the street, like if we paved it, we would have to take that water into our system. We couldn't put that probably to a wetland. The bigger, all the street water, the roof drains going into a swale and percolating down is probably pretty clean. And they're not going to care about that as long as we prove treatment, but.
So is he on board with this with?
He is because he, the swale cost him so much money to develop and he had to lose a lot to do it on. So that was loss for him. Where the wetlands, we're never going to let him develop on them, use them to your advantage. So we've been trying to help him. You, but he's so turn and burn that he doesn't want to slow down. And we're like, just slow down a second. Let's figure this out so that, cause he's just like, I gotta make money. I got, I'm selling that. He's just a go, go, go guy. So.
So is that one of his swells he put in that kind of looks like it goes into Oregon Avenue?
No, the swale that he put in, that's a legitimate swale with the maintenance agreement and all that is on Louisiana. I don't know what he did on, or on Oregon. I'd have to ask Stephanie, is there one there?
Are you talking about the little one on the downhill side of Oregon?
Well, so if you come off Mellinger onto Louisiana and you come to that first street and you go to the end.
Yeah.
To the right, like a hole dug out in a swell with water. And to me it looks like it went out into the Oregon, the right of way for Oregon street.
Okay. I'd have to, I'll have to look into that. I don't know that one.
Yeah.
I know there was a water body over there, but I don't know whose property it was on.
It was, it was on the bottom, on the lower side. There was a little pond there, finding that next adjacent property.
Yeah.
No, this pond is on.
Yeah.
Below where he's building the houses, but it looks like Oregon Avenue is supposed to go through there.
Yeah, you can't put a swale.
Yeah.
Okay.
Might want to take a peek.
Yeah. We're asking Stephanie, what is that? What, what? Yeah.
No, but it almost looks like it goes out, but it looks like to me.
Yeah. Well, and it's hard up there. Yeah. To know where everything is because it's not in its normal footprint sometimes, but I'll look into that. Oregon Avenue swale. Um, so that's kind of where we're at with the Louisiana. We're just kind of, it's not a master plan so much as we're paying attention to each and it's becoming a master plan. The INI in-house, that's the water infiltration. And we, I don't know why it says send to public works committee.
Yeah, I was just going to say.
Okay, this picture doesn't show. But right here, I went in and there looks like they dug out a hole right in here.
Oh yeah. I can't, I don't, uh, that doesn't look right to me. That's the end of a right of way. It's plotted.
Well, it's not, it's over to the right a little bit from the right of way.
Unless he's using.
The other right, if you come down the street, because he's building here.
Yeah.
But yeah, right in here.
Okay.
There's a, looks like they dug a pond.
Or did he, and it's holding water?
Yes.
Has it been holding? Holding water like, when, when did you go up there? How was it? Holding water this summer?
Two months ago.
Oh, okay. So that's pretty not wet. Okay. Weird. I'll get looking at Donald. I don't know what that is.
Yeah, I just.
It's just a, like he dug a hole and it filled with water, but he's not planning on, but it should definitely be on his property.
Yeah, but it looked, to me, it looks like it's in part of the right of way for Oregon Avenue.
Okay. Yeah.
So you guys might.
Yeah, that's a full plotted right of way, I think. Part of 60, isn't it?
Yeah. When it goes up there, yeah, it's 60. After B Street or D Street. Okay.
Just, I thought it was funny.
It is funny. Um, so the INI, yeah, we're just, I don't know why.
Yeah, I think we just need to, I think part of that, I know Ben and I have talked about that. One is, you know, I always say define the size of the elephant.
Right.
Again, we, we know how many manholes we got. Crews have done pretty good jobs to survey and they know how many ones are bad.
Yep.
So then we're just, okay.
What's that number?
It's going to take additional resources to be doing this. I mean, the guys are, well, we have to find out how much are, within our own means are you doing? Or do we need a little tacked on?
Right.
In our sewer.
Budget. Yep.
Because this is going to be a recurring cost forever.
Yeah.
And just do that, like the meter replacement program.
Right. Put so many a year.
And, and plan that how we can timely, like a 10 year plan of, or whatever.
Yeah.
How we can get this done and.
Yeah. So we spent ARPA, which was American Rescue Plan money from COVID on smoke testing and vacuum testing all the manholes. So we know which ones were losing pressure. Then we also had a sewer money, or was it CARES money? Maybe it was a little bit sewer and some CARES money.
Yeah.
We had an outfit come out and teach our guys how to pressure grout from the backside. So the land has to be wet on the outside and you push it in and then it seals it this way and hardens with the moisture. So the way we normally pressure grout, the water table ends up pushing that grout line in. And so when we see a crack, you drill through the wall of the manhole and you patch the outside.
So the intersection is holding it up.
The water pushes it up against and it never, it stops the leak. So that's what they did with 35 of them with this other crew. And then we got the materials for them to continue the process now that we know all the ones. So, cause ultimately we have to reduce our sewer going into the sewer can only be sewer. The INI is messing us up with too much to treat and get through our system quickly. Dilution is messing us up because we, they want 85% treated out of it. Well, when it's diluted, there's not 85% to take out of it.
So you're treating the stuff that doesn't need to be treated?
We're treating it and we're not being able to meet their mark. Because if it's diluted and only has 15% contaminants and you can only, you remove whatever percentage of that, if it's not 85%, 10. You don't get it down to five, you're in violation. So it's really.
So is this, is it working doing this?
Yeah. I mean, it's working because in the biggest deluge before the sewer system was running, that manhole was right there, but not overflowing. So we know that the stopping of the manholes that were letting some in incrementally kept it from overflowing. So as we do more and more of those, we should have, we should see it, right? We should see the result.
Now you talking the manhole down.
The Bellagio.
Yeah, the Bellagio.
That's what we call it.
The Bellagio fountain. But, um, yeah, so.
Kind of emphasized up there on that hill.
Yeah.
Faithful. Yeah.
Yeah. So they, they focused up here.
On this, yes.
For, with that team. But we know what all of them are and they all have numbers. Jonathan has a manhole Bible. He's the keeper of it. They've gone to every manhole. They've shown where all the outlets on it. Each manhole has a page. So it's like, what's the depth? What's the condition? Pictures? They had a manual that I developed where they had to go and tell me, is it cracking? Is it, you can see seepage because there's a water stain, right? You can see where it's coming in. So they've got a lot of data.
And there's how many of them?
I think there's 250.
I was just going to ask how many.
I think there's 252 or 250.
Not all are bad.
Yeah, not all are bad. And some are very shallow, depending on if they're just getting one house to the next manhole, right? But they're, and some of them are in, like you walk out into a field somewhere of someone's property.
Like you used to have.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Had a couple.
Probably still does.
You know, that's.
Got to be some manholes out there.
Yeah, I think they did.
I mean, they go a certain distance for.
Yeah.
Cleaning. Plug them.
Yeah. So that's the INI. We're tackling it and trying to solve our problem. One of the other problems that, you know, my time on council and this council, they, there were certain decades where they just did, they just survived out here. They didn't do any maintenance, which small towns just do. And so now we're the team that's got to.
So they're out of sight, out of mind.
Right. They really are. And if you don't have a problem, you don't even think about it. So we're now paying attention.
And this is where it's done during wet weather.
Yeah.
You got to have the water.
Yeah, which is.
Still another.
During the summer, sure.
Which is good because they can do a lot of tasks in the summer.
Which, yeah, which is good.
Yeah. Kind of splits our task or capacity. So the SDC study, currently our SDCs are around 11,000 to build a house before water and sewer connection, which is very low. We have not changed them since they were implemented. Our goal with the study is to look at what other places, apples to apples, other small communities and increase ours to something that's going to put money in the pots for future development. Cause SDCs can only be spent on increasing capacity. So if we take an SDC in sewer, we can't spend it unless we're putting in a new sewer line, right? You can't, you have to spend it on building out your capacity per city. If I get SDC in parks, I can't, I can put a new playground. I can't fix an old playground with that money, but I can put a new playground, a bigger one. So it's some strings that are hooked to it. And all the SDCs are based off plans we have. So we have a water master plan that tells us the next 20 years of water projects. And they use that, what those costs are to figure out, what do I need to charge someone today? For when I'm putting in that water main that they've identified in this master plan 10 years from now. If we're collecting those with every house, 10 years from now, we should have enough money saved to put in whatever the element is. And that could be a new street in the streets SDC. It could be a new reservoir for water, right? It could be anything that's more capacity, but our numbers are only 10,000. We're Multnomah County, it's a hundred grand.
Yeah.
Granted, theirs is probably extremely high. Ours is extremely low. We need to be somewhere where it doesn't kill development. But we aren't letting people come onto the system and not keeping enough money for the system to keep growing is basically what SDCs are.
I'll never forget when Bruce brought it up for the first time about six years ago, when I came on board. And, you know, they, at that time, our Brannonias SDCs were really, really low compared to like Hillsborough. I mean.
Yeah, like 10,000.
They've always been very low in this community and we've all, and we've never, we're almost getting to the point where we could have a study on it. I think we're going to this year, we're budgeted for it.
We're working RFP right now.
Be nice to increase those a little bit.
Well, it would because right now I think we're taking $850 for the parks for every new house. Well, one vandalism, that's gone.
Yeah.
So it's like in, in a new playground equipment, the cheap ones, like the ones I put in Anderson, 25 grand. And it's basically vinyl coated metal pole that's bent and, you know, a slide or plastic. I mean, they just get some of them, the one they have at the children's museum in Seattle, that one costs like 1.3 million dollars and it's a playground. That's just dumb. But yeah, SDC is definitely, the funds are in there and we kind of stole Medford's RFP. And then we're tweaking it to be ours because they had pretty good data, good example from what they got for their bits. So.
So SCC stands for?
SDC, system development charges. And those are what you, when you sign up to build a house, you pay those and you pay your water and sewer connection.
We only built three houses last year.
No, I.
How many permits? It was, it was pretty low.
I think three or four. Yeah.
Four, so.
Normally we kind of bank on like six is normally our, has been our normal. But we don't, in the budget, if we bring in lower number of houses, it's just because we're being safe.
Yeah.
Right. Cause you don't want to.
I think it's going to improve a little bit here.
I know Terry's going on his duplexes that are back there. So.
I hear him hammering away.
Yeah.
Oh, spring water.
Yeah, spring water. Yeah.
Springboard, yeah.
Oh, he's got another?
Yeah, he's doing, I think he's. Yeah, he's doing, I think he's doing six.
Oh.
In total.
We're ready for him. Is this the second one or the third?
This is the second one.
Second, yeah. He's got the one in.
Yeah. It was funny because when I had to go notice all of them for the E Street, you know, I went and I, I don't know what I was thinking. I let the engineer go and I did it. I went door to door at dinnertime. I was like, what am I doing? Everybody's home. I can't. And I went up to those two duplexes and there's like a dry swale in the planter strip and there's all these Hot Wheels rocks. Like, I'm like, oh, kids live here. They're using this.
You can hear them, you know?
You know, they're like playing with their Hot Wheels. So it's pretty cute. Um, so Timberland and Fund Management, that's a new one that's been added on this time. And so I just put it's a new project added by council, future work session to determine direction is needed.
We just need to workshop that.
Yeah.
I sent you an example of management plan that I just had to find.
Yeah.
That looked good to me, but I don't know.
I think, yeah, I think we make it our own and it will work. Um, the NPS sign-off, this is. This is my.
We all laugh over this one.
This is a nightmare. So National Park Service gave the city money to put in Spencer Park when it was up at the school.
Oh.
When the school bought that and we mitigated the wetlands down below and we did the land swap and the bond and everything, they were like, well, we put our money towards this, so you have to keep that pit toilet and you have to put stuff here for the moms, the tot lot, for the moms that are picking up their kids to hang out there. No one ever hangs out there. It's a strip that all the cars go by. You're never gonna have a little toddler playing on something right next to as the cars go in it. But anyway, we have to, we had two picnic tables there and Tim and Mitch put a, like, wooden balance log. We had to have some elements, right? Well, then the kids broke the picnic tables.
Go figure.
And so they put new ones. And so we need one more element, take a picture of it and send it to these people so that they can sign off on their dumb tot lot. What, he could build us something?
Got access to, all we gotta do is cut some rounds at different heights.
And like, do like a thing like this and then sink them. You know what I mean? Just click, send it. So because Tim and Mitch, every time I say the tot lot, they're like, they hate it because it's dumb.
Yeah, if you need some rounds.
Yeah, I might, I might be.
Long buds or something there we could cut.
What, like?
Yeah, something that you could.
You could step your foot on.
Yeah.
That's, yeah. And it doesn't, I'm even fine with like one this tall, one that tall, one, one, one. It just could be five logs.
I'm surprised this is high on the list.
Well, I think it's because it's forever.
It just needs to be done.
BG worn off. I hear you.
Yeah. So that's what's there. That's what the tot lot is.
I guess the other thing would be a tractor was a post hole digger. So the posts don't want to be bigger than the post hole digger.
Or our auger. Could you use the city's auger? We have an 18-inch auger.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, yeah.
We could use that on the tractor and just, you know, drop it.
Oh, yeah, the tractor.
Yeah. Because it's tractor driven.
Yeah, that'd be the way to do that one. 18-inch.
They're already putting you on, it's putting you to work. So crack sealing everywhere. We bought a small crack sealing machine. It works great for our small use, but we had, Austin was one of our employees and he was kind of, that was his project and his baby, and then he moved on. So then we didn't have another guy kind of prepped to do it. So we had two seasons where it didn't happen. They're supposed to put 80 hours a year towards crack sealing on the streets, but we had two seasons when we lost Austin and we were trying to get a new public works guy that we didn't do it. So this year, the budget has in it to rent a big machine and just go bust out the town and then get back to our two weeks with our small machine next year. So that's in the budget. Chris and Jeff are working on their timeline of what weeks, weeks they want to do it and so we can line up equipment and not be ready to do it and the equipment not be available.
So you're talking weeks to do something like this?
Two.
Two.
Two weeks. Or, but if it's two guys on it, then it will be one 40-hour week.
Oh.
Right? 80 hours because it's two guys doing it, but.
I think the machine to bring it in.
Yeah.
The trailer.
Yeah.
That has two wands.
Yeah. So they can just go do, ours, ours, the tank holds about that much. And it's like blocks of the stuff you heat up. It's slow and it's small. But if it's our perfect size, if we didn't have all the streets to catch up on. But we just want to get it once and done and get it everything.
A little bit of safety aspect because on a steeper hill.
Yeah. You're.
It's a runaway risk.
With the little machine.
You gotta, and coming down those steep hills.
Yeah.
Would maybe be a little bit of a chore, like coming down to the line.
And really, that's kind of our first line of defense because keeping the water out is what keeps your road, so.
Yeah. It's kind of something that, yeah, Ben and.
Yeah. Chris and them are like.
They came out of Public Works Committee too.
Yeah. Because they interviewed and went on field trips to go.
St. Helens.
Yeah.
Scappus.
One of them, Scappus.
Yeah, and Charlie was on Public Works.
Yeah.
If he were North Plains, they did crack sealing.
And they went and looked at a big machine, but then we were like, we don't have the money. Or is that, I mean, it'd be awesome to have North Plains as a unit, but we just didn't.
Yeah. And, and the philosophy on this too. When we, I go out and inventory the streets with the certain criteria. So I'm always looking at those streets and I'll mention, your street might be in excellent shape, but if there's cracks, and that's what we want to do is we're trying to get all our streets up to at least good. But you're starting out, and they've already done quite a bit. But with this week, we figure we can knock out a whole bunch. But you start at your top streets, get them sealed up so you don't start that deterioration.
Yeah.
We think we can really buy ourselves some years by doing that. And when you get down to one of these streets, it's alligator.
No.
So like State Street would be an example of that?
Uh, State Street is probably too far gone.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So yeah, and State Street's a whole nother, State and not are bigger projects. And that's one of the things when we talk a little later about streets and the philosophy of where we're going. Um, those are just money wise, they're gonna be multiple year projects or a huge funding, which we haven't found is out there.
So like you're saying, State Street would be a multiple year?
Yeah, because we would be grinding it. We would be putting the crown back in because the curves are only this.
Five man.
Only this, when they did the estimate, the curves are only two, three inches. They're, yeah, you gotta change it back.
State Street project in its entirety, which would be, uh, gutter curb.
Yeah.
And sidewalk.
Yeah.
The ramps.
Yeah.
Sidewalks.
Yes. Because some of them are just a ramp with a curb, not an actual ramp in the olden days, right? They didn't.
It's, it's 1.2 million.
Yeah. Yeah.
Wow.
And if we can only get 250 from the small cities allotment, that's year after year after year. Or figuring something out, taking some of our money, that grant, finding another grant to do more.
Through the county, maybe.
Or something. One of the ideas.
Warehouse.
One of the ideas we had with State was because there's the Timberlands out south and the county does use it, maybe State, we figure out how, if we can't get a funding cycle to do it all in one thing, we do piecemeal and then maybe we work with the county and they do the paving at cost or something. So there's like, right, there's could be ways to.
Different ways to maybe.
Because they have their own paving crew in the county and what if they paved out here in 10 years? Bring it on out. Bring it on over.
Yeah.
So I think, yeah, the crack sealing just keeps us going where we want to be going.
We think it's a strategy to extend the line.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And chip sealing might be another one of those strategies.
And you tried some of that this year.
Yeah, we did.
We did. We're gonna, I mean.
It's in here.
We can wait till.
We're gonna talk about some other options down the line. Yeah.
I got tons of questions and I don't want to eat up all the.
No, go for it. Yeah. Um, so the Corey Hill Stormwater Connectivity Master Plan. So this is ongoing as well as we develop connectivity maps throughout the city. So there are a few places on Corey Hill where you have a ditch and then it doesn't really connect anything. And just getting everyone's brain around, how do we get all the storm water to a safe place, right? So like, is it like five years ago, we got gifted some property on Rose Avenue that was wetland from a family. They couldn't develop it. They were some other state or no longer here. And they were just like, here, City of Burnonia. So that's kind of where we send through our treatment that that's a wetland bank. We can act as storm water management. So we're kind of putting together plans using that, knowing where there's not connectivity. We could still treat it all. We could still manage it all. But before I came or Ben was here, there was not a map that says there's a ditch here and not here. There's a ditch here, there's a sidewalk here and not here. There was nothing. So we've been trying to build that data set so that when we make decisions, we have all the picture.
There's no storm water drainage.
Yeah.
And this is trying to get it together.
Yeah.
So in an area like that, how much storm water can you say pool to that? Is there, obviously there must be a limit, right?
Our current storm water comes down to Halum in a huge ditch. And that ditch takes pretty much everything from the Halum this way up there. That all comes here to Bear Creek. Then the other half is what we would use that, when we need to do those extra connectivity, we have the capacity in that wetland to take it.
Oh, okay.
Where it is, where they're not missing. Because one of our concerns when we started smoke testing.
Yeah.
Is if we, all these people's roof drains are connected to it and we require them to disconnect, where is all that water going? We didn't know if everybody was connected or not or somewhere. So we kind of were freaking out thinking, if we start seeing the Pope smoke coming out of everyone's roof, we're gonna be in trouble.
We was afraid of it.
Yeah.
That's what spurred this.
Yeah.
Right.
Oh, we gotta get ahead of this.
Yeah. And so then when they came to us and we're like, here, we're like, that'll be perfect for this problem. So it's worked out, but we just keep building that connectivity mapping. I know Public Works has got one for sidewalks that Sheila's been going along each sidewalk and saying where they exist and don't exist. And so that just helps us make smart decisions. Uh, Lake Campground Project, so we did get a grant through Oregon Park and Recreation District this last 2023, 24. And we did a design. I don't know if you've seen it, but I can show you pictures of it. Um, and we had them do like a phase one, phase two, phase three. We did that so that our guys could potentially do phase one as skin in the game because the pricing of what the whole campground costs was gonna be more than the grant could be. You can only ask for a million and our estimates came up at 1.3. So we're, that's why I have here that the design is complete and we're working to plan phase one in-house groundwork and underground piping.
We gotta have 20% match.
Match. When you, when you go ask for the money. So we'd have to have 200,000.
For a million.
Of in-kind. And the estimate on the phase one work was like 470 was the benefit to put in the water, the sewer lines, put in a manhole because we'll need a manhole in the park that then goes to pump station three. So it's right there in the corner where the gravel is. That's where the campground is. So phase one would be underground. Phase two would be a primitive with the roads in, the uprights in for water and plugging in on the RVs. And then phase three would be the yurts and the restroom. Because there's three yurts that we wanted to put into the campground so people could, bikers could come and stay. If they didn't want a tent, they, there was a yurt option. And then a restroom, ADA restroom with shower, like Anderson kind of. But that's.
Can I give Dennis a little history on that?
Sure.
Yeah. Uh, last year, of course, we got the grant for the engineering project. The engineering worked on it for a while, brought it back to council and to the public. We had a public hearing and a meeting and it was really a neat.
Yeah.
Way we did it. They presented us with three options. And, and the council and the community voted on it and came up with one of the options, I believe it was number two.
I think you're right.
And that consists of an 18-site campground, five full RV hookups, three yurt sites and I believe 10, 10 sites with campfire rings and tables.
Doop purpose.
Uh, around a cul-de-sac, paved cul-de-sac roundabout, which is gonna go counterclockwise. And then not in the middle, well, the burner would be in the middle. We weren't gonna mess with it.
The liguan base is the middle. That's what you go around.
And then, um, in one, one side of it, there'll be, uh, men and women's bathrooms and showers, all brand new. So it was a neat thing how the community chose it. And right alongside the CZ trail there and.
I can see.
I think so too.
Yeah.
I think it's, you know, yeah, it's busy on like days when, but on regular days, there's not pretty many people down there. It's kind of peaceful.
Yeah.
You know, when you go in the off times and there's nobody there, it's.
Well, the CZ trail and the Banks Linger Trail on the National Trails List now.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I would think those yurts would be full year round.
Yeah.
And the, and the five RV hookups would be full.
Yeah.
So when does this phase one start?
Well, that's the thing. We had, we just got done with the grant and we realized we couldn't apply for the next grant because we didn't have match. So we're just in the beginning phases. My plan is to go to parks now that they have new members and stuff and kind of talk with them. And Parks budget's kind of low right now just because of the docs and the different costs we've incurred this year. But July 1, we could, we could start doing phase one if we had it all. We're gonna want to do it in the driest time of everything.
And we're trying to flush it all out too. You still had, because that's still had some questions on this grant process.
Yeah.
Or how long does our in-kind, if we, we could go and self-fund and do some of the in-kind work and then use that as match.
Yeah. But we need lots.
We could do in-house. I mean.
Yeah.
You know, they could put in a sewer and electrical conduit and water.
Yeah.
You know, the excavating and, you know, leveling of the whole project, you know, we could rent a machine.
Yeah. We don't, we haven't got the definitive answer of how long does that match count?
Yeah. Because we want to make sure it counts.
If we do it right now and we can't apply to you for 12 months, is it still good or are you, you know?
So could we do it the other way? Could we apply for the grant and say, we're doing this portion of it as in-kind? So then we don't do the work upfront.
You mean go like phase one, phase two together?
Well, yeah, I mean, probably could. I mean, I don't know what the numbers are, but.
I think we can count it.
I mean, just.
It's just getting that all done in one cycle. If it's, if, part of the reason I think we were splitting it is that we would do it, have it as in-kind and apply because trying to line up our guys doing that and whoever doing the rest of it in one grant might be a little tricky. Timing wise to get it all done, but I don't know, maybe.
I mean, it's something to think about. But then there'd be no risk of.
Losing it, yeah.
Losing our in-kind.
Right. And then the other thing that kind of hinders or helps that is every four years, they come out with a state mission on recreation, something, SCORP. And they fund the projects that fit in their criteria. So every four years, it changes a little bit based on the surveys that they do of every community and what communities are wanting, whether it's senior access or trail connectivity or skate parks. We went four years trying to get them to fund the skate park when skate park was in the criteria. And then it was not in the criteria anymore. And so that's why we had to work with Randy and local funding agencies and people that wanted to donate.
It should be pretty good though because they funded us for a design project.
Yeah. And campgrounds typically ADA campgrounds near other assets that are, they've already participated or spent money.
We can't sell that next to a lake on two of the trails.
Yeah. Yeah. Then what, what's the deal? Yeah. Yeah. But so that's kind of, I think it'll meet the criteria, but just sometimes you meet. Their criteria better. So your application bumps up a little in points. And then if it's hard to sell, you maybe don't get all the points. So. Just a game we have to play. Okay. So, um, old dump site closure with the state. So this is, we have the old dump site up there by Terry's gym, you know?
You just dump all stuff up there.
Yeah. Mary Ann Odom. Is the property right next to it. Her well that she has at her property does not produce. So she's hooked to her dad's old one. And the state won't release us from like signing off on like, you no longer need to monitor this 1980s dump. Because she does not have a producing well and we can't prove that it's not leaching. Cause it's so close. So they are going to come up and test her well. Because if it is, has any leaching, then that project could qualify for the orphan. Well, funding in the state and then they would put Mary Ann a new well from this. Funding source and then they'd release us. So that's what they're coming to do between February and March of this year is test her well. We went into her well to see if we could get it to. Yeah. Knock on wood. It's taking a long time. We went into, but there's no power there. The rats have just eaten. So they're gonna have to.
Is it a deep well?
I have no idea. I just went into her little pump house that had like a risque calendar, you know, husband's calendar or whatever. And I was like, Mary Ann, your husband's got quite the calendar. And she goes, oh my gosh, or whatever. How embarrassing. But I'm like, my grandpa had one too. Um. The girls couldn't go in the shed. Uh, so.
Been a pretty ongoing thing because DEQ has been changing people in charge.
Yes. At one point it took me like four months. I'm like, who is in this program anymore?
And it costs us every year. We have.
Yeah, we have to pay a monitoring.
But there's no monitoring.
No, it's just we have to pay because it keeps us on their record, I guess. But in the, uh, I'd have to ask Andy. I don't think it's over. Couple thousand or something. But the problem, I mean, the good part is, is it's 1980s. So the chemicals we all have in our houses now. The normal citizen really didn't have access to those in those earlier years. So. Of all the dumps to have, it's probably a pretty not risky one for leaching. I mean, when we went in there with them and we were turning over soil, you could turn over soil and there'd be a perfect plaid shirt. From 1980, like someone threw it away and it was not even, the material was still there.
Wow. Wonder if Mary Ann's ever shocked her well.
I don't know. I think when they first.
You could dump a couple gallons of bleach down there.
But you wouldn't want to do anything now.
Yeah, we want to tell the, yeah.
Right.
I think she, I think it just didn't produce for her. So that's why originally she's. No flow. So she is hooked up to dad's. Cause it's kind of weird. Where his is up like on the edge of the draw, but it's high up.
On the edge. Of the breakover.
Yeah. Hers is like near her house, right in her backyard. And it just seems like. I don't know how you, maybe they're just, she just didn't hit a pocket.
I don't blame you.
Wonder if some if it, if just dried up.
Right. Right.
Could have very well.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So they were saying that that's why they want to check it. I mean, it didn't produce good when she first put it in, when she first built that house. So I don't know when she moved there.
I bet it's gonna be fine. I, I would.
We're kind of hoping that it does show some leaching because then she qualifies.
Yeah.
Get the new one. Then it would get us off the hook and then we'd just be great. But I don't know if it will because there's not the wrong chemicals.
Yeah, and it's kind of uphill for this. I don't know.
I'd be surprised if there was leaching right now.
I'm, I would too, because it just, I mean, the materials we found in the dump, like when we dug around and looked, were not like. What you would probably find in there now. You know, now you'd probably find compact fluorescent bulbs crushed up and paint and oil and. People just throwing whatever.
But the smackles are going through right now is holding up the escrow is the, that was a gas station at one time. So they're checking the soil.
Is that at the old?
At the store right now. Oh, that's why it's taken so long.
Cause that's like, well.
DEQ.
That's like what we had to do at the senior center food bank. That was an old oil plant.
Yeah.
And so we have monitoring wells on that property.
Little chiver on.
Did he work there?
Yes.
Did you work there?
No, no, but I can remember the old feed store being.
Feed store.
Yeah.
There.
Didn't, didn't. Didn't the tanks end up down here for the 76?
Does that the tanks that they?
Well, Dick Titus pulled them out.
No, no, we're talking.
The standing ones.
Down off the end in the Halum when.
Yeah.
Uncle Larry well, his name used to run it. Oh.
Oh, yeah.
But anyhow, then Uncle Larry bought it.
Yeah.
I think your dad was.
Dad ran it together for a while.
Yeah.
So yeah, it's interesting because.
Turned it in?
No.
Ralph?
He did the show. It's the right.
Okay. He had the over here, the coffee shop.
Right.
Yeah. So when we did that one, we had to build that and place that building in the parking lot a certain way to cover for no plume. So that we wouldn't, rainwater wouldn't get in the ground and push the petrol to the people on weed. So that's why that building's positioned how it is and where the parking lot is the way it is. And we had to. Treat all of the storm water on site. So in the parking lot, if you ever notice, there's like. Six squares in the parking lot. Those are storm water tanks under the parking lot.
Tank.
They're like 14 feet tall, big things like this that hold the storm water. Because of the contamination, but.
And when the overflow, they go to a.
To a.
Bio swell.
Bio swell behind the corner of the building and then they filter out the rest of the way.
I had no clue all that was.
Oh, yeah. They make you treat everything now, which is probably good. It's probably bad that we didn't used to. Yeah. So the Vernonia Lake boat ramp, that is a now into the future project. I'm sure you've heard it talked about. Our plan is to basically excavate, pour and then push in a boat ramp. So it's a concrete under the water. Um, Lower Columbia Engineering, who's our engineer, has done it in other places and it worked great. And so we're working on developing an estimate of. You know, ours and how long it would be and what that work.
So it's poured and they just shove it down?
Yeah.
Yeah. They pour a slab goes down?
Yeah, you pour a slab and when it gets cured, then they. Shove it, you know, take forms off and then you just take a cat or something.
Do they roll it?
And you just shove it.
So then you just have a uniform flat surface because our problem is it's so shallow. You gotta get way out there.
Right.
Or you're not floating. So.
You know, yeah.
So that's kind of where that's at. It's in the design, you know, we're going to start that conversation. Lower Columbia has already developed being a proposal of what they think the cost would be for our size and project. Uh, city equipment maintenance plan. So this was on there because during the cares time, we had this company that was like. Great. We worked with them. We built this whole system where we mapped everything. And then they changed names and then they never had a start. They kind of didn't, they did the onboarding, but they didn't launch the app or whatever. It was going to be a basically a maintenance system where all of the equipments put in and it would kick out. Work orders like do the oil change on this, do this, right? It was all well and good until they tried to charge us like $10,000 a quarter or something. And we're like, wait a sec. We signed up with you guys. It was $2,500 and this a quarter. And they're like, oh, this and this and that. And we're like, yeah, we can't afford that. So we failed with.
We terminated it.
But we're still doing the maintenance the same as we were. We just don't have it in the system like that cool system would have helped us. But.
We could probably eliminate that one from the list.
We could, but I don't, I don't eliminate anything unless you guys are okay.
Do we still have the laptops? Did they provide the laptops?
No, we have, our guys have those. Yeah.
Are on our own.
Tablets that the guys have for.
Can we still use those in our own app?
Yeah, they use them every day.
Awesome.
Yeah. So it's no loss of that because we got the guys. Ben has different layers that our guys log into the system and then they can. Pull up the water meter layer and see right where a water meter is, right? Where, right? So a lot of our stuff is mapped. So our guys use it all the time.
Now that Jeff said.
No.
Yeah. That was our concern was he held all this institutional knowledge. And then when he retires or if something happens to him, nobody knows there's a valve in the middle of something. That needs to get turned off before you can do something, right? And so every day that Jeff would pop in, Ben would go, hey, Jeff, can you come in here for a minute? And he's like, what's going on right here? And Jeff would be like, blah, blah, blah. And Ben's like typing to get, get it up there, get it up there. So. We're slowly but surely getting it off that Jeff said.
All the utilities mapped.
Yes.
That's wow. That's good to hear.
Yeah. So what do you want?
Yeah. Well, still on the city equipment maintenance plan. Cause that was going to generate, if I remember right, that was going to generate work orders. I mean, we tried to do everything through the city now through work orders.
Yeah.
So, you know, we got documentation and we're doing things in orderly fashion instead of somebody, hey, you need to do this, hey, you need to do that. And then forgetting things that need to be done, but. So. I mean, equipment maintenance, a lot of times it's done on. A time period or an hour meter or something like that.
Yeah.
For, you know, new changes and stuff like that. I just don't think that's super complicated there to do in-house, but. What brought this up this other day is Mitch was down at the lake.
Yeah.
The faucet, the water fountain and. The water fountain there that we were complaining about didn't have water.
Yeah. What's going on?
It had water now, but now it probably broke again because it forgot to get turned off.
Ah.
So it's. There, yeah, I'm, I'm trying to think of. Do they need to have, I mean, this would be an easy thing, just even on a computer every year at a certain.
Well, they have a Public Works calendar, like put the dam in, take the fence out. Do this, do that.
So, yeah, do they have a, you know, winterizing?
Probably why that.
Winterizing.
Tim, Tim, probably that should be on Tim's list. Tim has.
Take an inspection plate off.
Yeah.
Get in there to turn that off, which is a little weird because you'd think you'd want to turn off.
Like at a.
At a.
Master.
Yeah.
Well, and yeah, keep going and all.
So that, that's what's spurring this is we still do need something.
Yep.
We need, you know.
But maybe there's, maybe there's an app that doesn't take all the setup where you just put in your information.
Yeah.
Some, but I haven't had time to, you know, Google search what, or call my other cities and ask, what are you guys using?
Yeah. And then you just put all the little bullet points in there. You know, they, you got that lift. You can print this out. Okay. This is all the things for the parks.
Yeah.
I gotta go do.
And I think, I think if we had it on Tim's list, it would be a no brainer. It's probably because it's out of Public Works is, they don't typically.
Well, I don't know who's responsible.
Tim, Tim winterize.
Anything in parks.
Yes. He winterizes Hawkins. Yeah. He goes and puts the antifreeze in the toilets and clears out everything, gets all the paper goods out of there so they don't get moldy. Yeah. He does parks. So I'll just add that.
And it could be turned the valve.
Yeah.
Maybe it's not working and they still had water up to the heads. I don't know.
Yeah. Schedule and then all, all.
Some reason Mitch is taking care of it.
Yeah. Google. Well, Mitch was probably like, what the? Google apps. I mean.
So.
What's your thing, Donald? About that?
The fountain back by the bathroom, pit toilet.
Yeah. It's just the, on the stand one?
Yes.
What's going on?
Looks like to me, yes, they have a shut off valve in the ground.
Okay.
But if you don't drain the water back out of that, it's still going to freeze and break. So you need a way to.
You need like a little.
You need a drain. They do make some faucets that have a little cap you can take off.
Okay.
And let the water drain out.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know how that one's set up.
It, it looks suspicious to me. So.
Like it won't, yeah, the drain.
You know, you can shut the water off, but if you don't.
Relieve it.
Drain the water out, it's going to freeze and break what's there.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that's a little bit, I was concerned about this one. If they didn't have kind of like the fountain, the phosphory fountain ones, you shut them off, it drains underground.
They go right.
Yeah.
Water.
Yeah. Okay.
I don't think the one back there does. I could be wrong.
So we either need to institute something or put in a faucet that has its own system.
And that's, I don't know. I don't know how long that's been there, but that thing is.
Ugly.
Dometized pipe. And it, I'm seeing when you turn it on, a bunch of rust comes out of it at first.
Oh my God.
Yeah. So we might.
So we need to redo it.
Upgrade that to something.
Just get something that's got an easy drain.
We were talking about getting a new one at one time about two years.
Did, but then we pushed back on the price and we were going to go with.
Right. The one at the front.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we have two fountains to the lake.
Right.
The one at the front was broke that more people are complaining about, but I was just.
By the restaurant.
Kind of bringing this up.
Yeah.
It might have the same problem.
Fix so that we can drain the water out.
Yeah. So you go shut something off and it does the whole thing. Okay. Got it.
And even the one there by JCPenney, I don't know if it has a drain in it. So it doesn't freeze when they shut it off.
Yeah. I'll have to have Mitch pull the.
I mean, just a little proactive.
Yeah. I mean, they end up getting broken there, turned off and then we're having to complain about, hey, you need to get the water on.
Yeah.
Just trying to.
Okay.
And in those application ball valves are no good.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Because the ball valve will trap the water and will break in the side. So you need the gate valves.
Ball valve no go is what my note says.
Yeah, they make those. Dad's got one there. It's on his shop. He's always have to reach down and open that little drain.
Make sure it doesn't.
I mean, you could tee in a valve and drain it too. But. I have seen they'd make a special valve with a little cap you can take off.
Okay.
So I mean.
All right.
But just trying to.
Yeah.
But that was just one example. Other things there are and just.
Yeah. And I think their calendar is pretty good. Public Works of what their tasks are. They keep a good handle on that and I don't really have to put work orders out for those things.
Need to build one for.
Yeah. Just build a Google one and have it go to Tim and yeah, that's easy.
Great Tim, this week.
Right.
polarization.
Oh, yeah. And he's usually on it. He did, he was like, I didn't get a winterize Hawkins yet because those contractors still use it.
Oh, yeah.
So he didn't want to shut it down on them, but he did. He went and fixed it. Um, sidewalk master plan. So that's another one. That's the one I was telling you Sheila from the Public Works Department or committee is going through and. Uh, mapping where the connectivity.
Oh, we haven't.
I don't think you've presented it to council yet.
I don't think it's come to council.
No, not yet. Um, Anderson RV site increase. So this was kind of a plan of the parks in the parks master plan to. Put like four more RV sites where the playground used to be, since the playground's now located by the picnic shelter. It's kind of really sunny, not good tent sites in the summer. It's just blazing sun. Um, the only thing is this might, depending on what the state does with the FEMA Endangered Species Act laws, they're trying to bring down on us. To manage the salmonid species in the river and things that environmentalists are saying are contributing to their decline. They're putting some restrictions on us. One being that they really don't want to see development within 170 feet of a fish bearing stream. And I'm like, and they don't want you to put more impervious surface. But that might be the little hiccup. We might have, have to be either gravel or some sort of paver pad. Gravel is probably going to be what we get away with. Um, but then if any.
It's the blacktop.
Right. Can't be impervious. They aren't wanting us to put any more pavement where we don't already have pavement if it's within 170 feet. So one of the bummer spots which we were all, and this is as of January 25. They want none of these things to be happening. So we were all bummed because not street really needs pavement. But it's within the 170 feet. So it, so we could pave what exists there, but if we wanted to widen it. to the full width, we'd have to find other impervious surface to that same square footage and remove it so we could put that in.
Oh, wow.
It's a lot of, I don't know if it'll go, the state DLCD just pushed back on it and said, we don't have the capacity to even review these.
Oh, really?
And so we're like, what's the point of making everyone do it? The cities are gonna restrict people's use of their own property and no one's gonna come check it? Who is gonna wanna do that?
Yeah.
So it's a, in a state fight, but we're getting prepared for the ESA just because if it goes in July, we have to have all of our ducks in a row. So we're preparing as if it's going to happen for what people can do and all of our documentation and stuff, but if it doesn't happen, then good on us and we can pave Knott Street and put in some RVs. But I just, it's on the, it's on the list, but it's not budgeted for. Most likely we'd get a grant and the FEMA ESA may limit this, so I just put that. Uh, Anderson park boat ramp. There's the old kind of ramp that's behind the park host.
Yep.
And we've had great years where people go and put in and don't get stuck. And then we've had years where they get stuck and they just do this. And so then there's just two big divots in the hill. So we've been playing around with it because now a lot of them are putting in at the confluence, which isn't problematic because the Ridge Riders Road goes right to it. But if we were to up that, it's in the floodway. So it'd have to be something that goes down, whether it's metal or concrete runners in the ground, or if it goes on top, it would have to get removed during flood season because it'd be something that everything would just hit. It's just kind of there, but no uh, specific.
Does it get used very much?
Some years, yes. In some years they just choose to go to the confluence because it's just too muddy.
Few years been a guy putting in down there.
Oh, really?
Running the river.
Yeah.
Besides the locals.
So.
Few outer towners.
Just, I think if some plan or some agency starts doing some access stuff, maybe then we re-up and but it's still on the list, but it's just not going anywhere right now because we're just kind of waiting to see.
Cause they go down there and I mean, you know, they butt it up pretty good. They tear it up.
There's no rock in it at all.
No.
And the trouble is it's so low there that when we get high water, it swashes it up.
Yeah.
So you can put rock, but a couple of high water events, now you got on top of rock. And so it's like, we're trying to figure, we're thinking maybe concrete runners and the city crew could take tobacco and just skim it.
Every.
Off.
Like if you did it like, cause like Angie.
Okay, so stupid question, but why can you do that and you can't put in?
Cause it'd be, it'd be, uh, it wouldn't increase the rise.
No, 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 no. I mean.
Impervious surface. Yeah, ESA might foul us on that.
Yeah, it might foul us on that too. It, I'm just explaining to you why it's on the list and how it got there.
Yeah.
But if the ESA didn't, and the other thing we talked about too is, is there any sort of metal? Like ramping, you could just put in for the winter.
In the winter.
Time and then pull it out.
You don't think like big rock, like a bigger rock instead of the.
Pit run?
Yeah, like.
Tracks or pit runners?
The only problem is, is that we have to, we mow it because it's, it's kind of just a hill comes down like this and then the draw where they go in goes like that. So we have to keep it all mowed. So that's why we were thinking something flush with the ground maybe wouldn't be problematic and we could mow and I don't know. But that's kind of where we're at. It doesn't really have money. And it's just still on the list because we all kind of want it, but we don't know how to do it.
I did, yeah.
Yeah.
We should take it off the list.
We don't know, you know, and then it's money too. You're gonna have to find funds because the parks fund doesn't bring in a ton of money for that kind of extra. Maybe I'll get a marine board grant or something.
Yeah.
Who knows? Um, the city welcome signs that we're talking about this one right here.
It really got updated, Rick.
So it's been um, falling apart and council um, had a discussion that they wanted it to be a community project. Rick Hobart and Donald Norman are the spearheads of the community project. Um, and so it's just, they're working to get a replacement that will match the kind of backdrop of the new Granonia sign, have timber letters like the old one had, and then a better, you know, framing and build.
I can give you an update on it.
I can give you an update on it.
Go for it.
Yeah. So we went through Pacific Stainless and another entity that produced the large sign out on the highway. We're gonna build, have it built, the same material. I got a, a bid from each company totaled out eight hundred and, or $8,775. I went ahead and paid $340 out of my own pocket for a mockup. Brought it to the council, got their approval. It's twelve feet by eight feet high, made out of metal, same coloring as the sign. We do have the funding now for it, I believe. We have the total amount. So as soon as we get that money, I'll pay Pacific Stainless and we'll give Tony the green light to manufacture the sign, the metal sign. And, and so that's where it's at. So I think by the end of this month, we might be able to give Tony the green light for that.
Nice.
I look for it to be installed by, by this spring problem. Your car in the. Yeah. Yeah. We haven't started that yet. I've got one of the halves of a cedar at my house.
Hey, if you come down looking for the other one, it's on the other side of the road now.
Okay. Yeah.
On the opposite side.
So Tony and I, and I are gonna carve the trees and, and uh, Donald and I are gonna go over and get the post out. And I already got a bid for the two posts, the 16 foot, eight by eight, so.
Okay.
Yeah. So it's coming along, so.
That's a treated post?
Yeah, it'll be treated. So I gotta get with Mitch to pick out an area where we wanna put it and mark it, then we'll do a locate.
Yeah.
So we wanna move it out just a little bit more closer to the highway and up a little further so it's more.
It's kind of in a hole.
Yeah.
So if we move it forward, it'll seem a little taller without it actually being taller than.
More visible.
So.
Yeah.
That's where that's at.
Yeah.
Then we'll have to move the light.
Oh, the light's already moving.
Yeah.
Pete's sake though.
We'll get it going though.
It's driving me crazy. Electricians. I wish I had electricians.
Speaking of signs, I forgot to tell you this, Joseph, but the Nahal Valley campground sign is either stolen or gone.
What?
I drive out there.
Took it down to redo it last a while back.
Somebody took it down to redo it?
Was it the old one?
No, the new one. Out on, right at the airport road in 47.
Well, we.
It's gone.
Okay. There was like a plywood one on two sono tubes. Is that the one you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay. We took it down because that was a homemade one. It wasn't like ours. The one for the park is in, right when you enter the park.
Oh.
And we had the county redo the park sign to say the brown sign that's on the post on the, across the street from the intersection, that now says Nahal Valley Park and Campground on the county's brown and aims them down there.
So right when you turn in the airport road.
Yeah.
On.
On, on timber.
On the Gulf.
On timber, right across, right. That was a homemade one by Richard Stein way back when.
Yeah.
Oh.
Pretty deep.
It was like plywood and then it was like cut router, the letters were routed into it.
So you're not replacing anything.
Not on the, not on there because we don't own that property. He got permission from the Fulmers at the time to put it up, but then now it's two or three times. So we just redid the county one to say Nahal River Park and Campground. And then at the park is our green like city hall and all.
I got you. Okay.
Okay. Um.
Sorry.
That's okay. Uh, lake leak resolution. So we had a lake leak. Cousin was data finding and testing the flow per minute and all the things. And then they did some work to try and remedy that. Um, it seems to be they remedied it with what the earth, the earth work, or is it back?
And when I was walking around, I was like, hmm, this seems to be increasing. So I did go just measure it just last.
Okay.
So I went back in my records for this elevation of the water after we did the work. I think we were down around 11 to 13 CF, oh, CF. Gallons per minute.
Yeah.
Uh, we're up to 23 now.
Ah, dang.
I don't know if it's starting to get worse or not.
Okay. So we're just keeping our eyes on it.
Eye on it.
You know where.
Well, when, when, when we had Robert Watts come down, his excavator and, and we cut a trench across and we were cutting rodent holes about this big around.
Oh, wow.
So, and then we just retook that dirt, repacked it in there. The question is, yeah, are those active rodents holes, are they gonna just do it again? You know, how quick is this gonna come back? Uh, the water level is a little too high to be in there really effectively trying to address it at the time. We need to do it when our low period late summer before we start pumping again.
Yeah.
And Robert had some ideas. He says rodents don't like to dig through rock. So we said, maybe if we have to do it again, we were thinking, you know, put some sheet piling or pour a concrete wall in, or he said, yeah, this don't like digging too rock. They hit something like that. So maybe we dig a trench, fill it full, pit run. You know, and, and, and then do on both sides of it, repack it.
Mm-hmm.
So it's sealed. So, you know, and he spent like not even two hours down there to, to remedy the situation. So if it comes back where it gets too, too much, I mean, because I think it was close to 100 gallons per minute when.
When it was the danger.
We kind of seen it. It was kind of weird because right before Robert got there to work on it, then all of a sudden it slowed down again. Robert goes, I bet one of them steelhead found the hole and tried to go in it and got stuck. We didn't find a steelhead, but for some reason, all of a sudden it slowed down and was, I'd monitor the elevations. It wasn't that. So. So, yeah, it was, but.
So this stays on the list because paying attention.
We might have to get back in there and hit it again.
And then the last thing is the Dewey Pool Fish Ladder. So now that we have the sewer project complete and the lower fish barrier, which was the concrete encased pipe, that's what they saw as a fish barrier has been removed. Now we'll go talk to them. Basically, they see the abutments that hold the big uh, log, what do you call them? What do you call it? Like braces?
Support.
Yeah, log supports. They see the, that stem, little stem wall in those three as a, as a fish barrier. So they want a fish ladder to go around the kiddie pool during the three months that it's up.
Yeah.
Are you kidding me?
They want it, they want it on the far side, which luckily we own the old health center and we, Ben's been talking to, so weirdly.
There's somebody owns a little chunk there.
Somebody owns this. I think it's the Aldrich and I think they're gonna end up giving it to the city. So this is the old health center site. This is the creek and the Aldriches own it. I don't know how in the olden days someone bought it, but they don't walk, they're like, yeah, no. And so it's, is it Aldrich? Could they be connected to the Davies? There's some connection to the Davies too.
Like.
Like it's a trust.
Oh.
Like a trust with kids and their spouses from the mother. I don't.
Could be. So.
Yelled across the street.
So Ben's been, Ben's been talking to the members of the trust because they thought they had already given it to the city. But at some point the county didn't like notarize or something. So that's where we're at, trying to figure it out. Once we know we own it or the county recognizes that we own it, then I'm gonna re-up with ODF and W and talk to them because we said, we're never, you want this, we don't have the money. So you're gonna have to tell me some grant funding.
Yeah.
That we can do. The reason we wanna participate with them is that they're the key holder to if something goes wrong on the Dewey Pool side, they have to give us the in-water work permit. And if we don't play ball with them on the fish ladder, they won't give us a permit.
Yeah, I think it's a state statute actually.
Yeah. That you have to be willing to follow the regulations of the fishing.
It's a recognized fish barrier. They, they have a list.
Yeah.
I happened to slip onto it in fact.
Oh, you did?
And was going through it, but yeah, on that list. And the state legislature passed this. If there's one of these barriers, I mean, they're basically wanting to get rid of them.
Yeah.
They were basically at the meeting we had, they just assumed it'd go away.
Yeah.
And.
The pool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we're like, we're not doing that. And you're.
Yeah.
Dale tried to explain to them, it actually cools the, it acts as a cooler because the deeper water keeps cold and then it shoots out cooler temperature into the lower, in a time when we need cooler temperature. Why? And the guys are like, oh, I don't know about that. And Dale's like, I'll send you my data.
So was it just? Last year I gathered a lot more data before we put the dam in and then after. Uh, what's going on is it's mainly, because it's, because even, I know there were some kids down here that that stayed at our park.
Oh.
They're doing field work.
Oh, okay.
At OSU.
Oh, okay.
Wild fishing wildlife program. And anyhow, I was, I was talking to them, same thing. I said, well, what's conventional wisdom on like that? Because they went up, they'd go after they got work, they'd go up and swim.
Oh.
And, and so I say, yeah, you like that pool and this and that. And I said, what's the conventional wisdom on, on a pool like that? Well, that's usually not good. It warms the water, you know, this and that. And I go, what if I showed you data that suggested that that's not true? But, because yeah, that's what I'm down here doing, taking extreme temperatures. I says, this is, this is a couple of degrees colder. Two to four degrees colder at the confluence than after the dam's in than versus when the dam's out.
Wow.
So we're.
Hard to argue that.
We're willing to play ball with them, but we just have to make sure I own the property that we're gonna.
Yeah.
Fish ladder. So the, and the weird part is, is it is not a migration time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just for little juveniles to get out of the way of big fish, I guess. So basically we'll have to do a fish ladder that starts below the dam, goes up along and then gets, comes out, out past where the kids are swimming because you don't wanna put baby fish where kids are.
Yeah, they were concerned about even people being in the stream downstream of the dam and or it had to be passed where the kids were playing in the pool because this I'm like, I'm sitting here scratching my head because I don't see, and, and the data from this year, here's the eye opener. You know where the fish wanna be? They do wanna be in that pool. Because the temperature above the pool was in the lethal range. But not, not, not the pool and downstream to the end of. And I'll tell you why.
Why?
It's, that's why there's albert trees on either side of the creek with leaves on it.
Yeah. It's cooling it.
It's cooling it in the summer. It's not the amount of water.
Yeah.
It's the vegetation.
That's the other thing.
When the leaves fall off, it's a natural thing and it warms up the.
Yeah.
I mean, what was it, three or four years ago when we had the big bug kill? I mean, you look at all the, all the trees that have been killed along the.
Yeah.
All up and down the Nahal and Rock Creek.
Well, and that's what Maggie's constantly planting trees to try and shade and shade.
Yeah. Conifers.
Yeah.
Bigger, taller.
Right.
Those only last so long.
Right.
And now the elm trees, we get that bore out here. There's a lot of elms on the river. We don't realize how many there are.
Ash.
Get the ash.
Throw in ash.
Ash board.
Yeah.
But what's cool in that stream? I mean, other than, you know, that hyperic zone that we're using for the sewer to, you know, was the benefit of using it to cool. We back that water up in there, you know, let's five foot.
Mm-hmm.
That, that's a huge heat sink that, and, and you don't have any bedrock or anything rock exposed like in the. That, that's a huge heat sink that, and, and you don't have any bedrock or anything rock exposed like in the mainstream. It's just shallow and, and, and that stream get, stream bed gets exposed and that sun just heats it up and it heats sinks that right into the water. That Dewey Pool doesn't do that. It's all covered up. Plus that ground, you've got that interaction and there's gotta be, that water comes to that dam, of course. I'm sure it goes underneath that concrete water that's across the stream.
Mm-hmm.
And, and then comes back up because when I took a temperature probe right below the dam spillway, uh, right, that surface water come off, that is warmer. Boy, I didn't go, I got down just underneath the bridge and all of a sudden temperature's just diving. And as you go down the stream, it keeps going down. That's forcing that water into the ground around the dam and
Cooling it in the back end.
Yeah. Now, the construction crew this year on that sewer project, they were digging up to there. My concern was they were going to get over there by Park Drive. Our first plan was they were going to dig through there. And I was like, man, if we get that dam in, I think we're going to have issues because they're 20 foot down and they're going to get into that.
Yeah.
We ended up not doing that, but the construction guys did say they noticed the difference once that dam was out, even though they were down here on Adams.
Yeah.
They said.
Because they were fighting to keep it up when the dam was up, you know, because things were sloughing and doing like
Yeah.
Yeah, all charged in there. Yeah.
Yeah.
It was interesting.
Hmm.
But yeah, so that's the Dewey Pool Fish Ladder. I put five years on it, but who knows?
Yeah. And they were all giddy because they had some, all that federal money coming, I think, I don't know if it's the
Yeah, I don't know.
Infrastructure plan or what. And they were like, oh, you need to apply. And then, then we applied. Engineers did a quick thing and put in.
Yeah.
And
No. We were like, okay, well, we tried.
And I'm pointing out to them, okay, but if we end up losing a wall down there and need to do concrete work and then you're not going to allow us. So we can't put the pool in. And you just warmed in the Hanlon by two to four degrees.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that isn't going to look very good when I bring the news station out here.
Yeah.
It would hardly cool on it.
Something that's almost a hundred years old.
Yeah.
I mean, the Dewey Pool is like, what, thirty-eight or something?
You know?
I think it got
Because I don't know. I think they learned these things in college and nobody ever challenges it.
Or they don't go and field test it.
The data and then I'm like, oh, I'm scratching my head.
Yeah.
Why is this colder here?
Yeah.
Hmm.
So those are the current projects. The completed ones are the Manhole, the Clots Up Fountain.
Yeah.
Uh, Springboard, I put it on completed because really we just have the little honeydews and finishing. I noticed they put some mulch down at Shea. They've been dressing up the fixing the grass. Um, the Louisiana Water Main has been upgraded. The sections, they switched over all the people now. North-South connection's done. The docks are in. We painted the shipping container. This is all since October. Like I do every, I tell you what gets completed since your last one.
Uh.
And then, uh, the Weed Avenue Bateman's Water Service is in.
Oh, they did it?
Yeah.
Oh.
Even though they had the valve that was stuck open or closed or whatever.
Oh, that was the one?
That was when they were putting in that. They went to turn off, they thought they were turning off three houses and a whole bunch of people started calling him. Us at City Hall were like, oh my God, we're calling Jeff. You know, because people are calling upset and we didn't, why didn't you notify us? And it turned out to be a weird valve that nobody had on. It was in the planter strip of the house on Fairway. Like the first house right there on the, if you turn down Fairway on the right.
Yeah.
They have a long planter strip with big steel wagon wheels in the planter strip. Jeff's, Jeff's out trying to find the thing and he goes, dang it, you're going to move this metal out of here. He couldn't find the tracer wire because it kept pinging.
Oh, okay.
They wrapped railroad spikes. They had, it was like a railroad museum in their planter. So it was railroad spikes and all this stuff. And Jeff's like, damn it, that's not the pipe. And he's trying, and just freaking out.
Did they do some type of marker there from now on?
Well, he was trying to metal detect it because they all have to be wire wrapped.
Yeah.
So you can just find it, meet, meet, right? But with all this other metal, it was just pinging every, he was so frustrated. He got it figured out.
Does that have one more question?
Yes.
How about the, what's the name of your street?
Lakeview?
Lakeview. Are those hookups completed yet?
You mean?
Oh, yeah.
What hookup?
He's talking like behind Fred Ovies, the sewer.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. That's all.
Are they all done?
Yes, they're all done.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think that
I thought we had that on the list.
You did. I think it secretly came off on the October one. Because we had it done by the end of summer.
Okay.
Okay.
It was on that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. I think the prior one, we just finally decided to have somebody go in and get it done and over with.
Yes.
Robert did those?
Uh, no, Five Star.
Oh, that's right. Five Star did.
Five Star came out. Eric did the groundwork and then, uh, Ed, their plumber.
Everybody shook them.
Yeah.
Awesome.
So we had an old line in the alley back there that was not
Well, the line wasn't in the alley.
It was under all the
It was under all the house.
Underneath the mailhouses.
Turquoise.
Yeah. So we had to, they, the plumbers had to crawl under and rehook everyone to a line in the alley. And then Five Star did a solid and like redressed the whole alley with gravel to make all the neighbors happy. The lady on the end that has all the garbage.
Yeah.
He had probably two hundred and fifty plastic buckets. Like all of this stuff stacked in the back and Eric Clark comes and he's like, I have to go right there. He had to move all that stuff. She moved it all. And then when they were done, moved it all.
No way.
And I'm like, this was the time to recycle. This was the time to hit the dump. We were, she's going to end up, we're going to end up having to abate that property because she's had all of her things. And now the judge is like, she's just getting the thirty-three thousand dollars of tickets and you guys go in there and she can just pay you to get it out.
We got it.
So Eva and I were talking about that at lunch. How many more thirty-yard dumpsters do we have on our? Because the franchise, we get three a year from Waste Management. One goes to Jamboree, right? Because we always do that. And then most of the time we use them for other projects. We use them for the stadium when we took down the stadium. But I'm like, do we have any left? Because we really need it for her house if we have to evade all that. So.
Carrie's Buckner's property is looking pretty good. It's coming along.
Who's, who's doing all that?
Robert Primo.
Oh, really?
I think through his daughter, right?
Yeah, Carrie's paying for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh,
I see him.
I it's looking a lot better. It's still got a ways to go, but I, I think by June first, it should be pretty well gone.
That'll be awesome for her because that's a huge undertaking.
That was Terry?
Daughter.
Terry.
Yeah, that's her daughter. Who won?
Well, Terry and Terry.
Carrie.
Yeah. Carrie's her name, but it, it was a circus because Terry Buckner is
We want this on the record.
Supposedly Terry Buckner is a father to Deener and Terry.
Yes, I believe he, I think they had DNA tests. I think he did.
And then later when she married Terry Schaumberg, they took Schaumberg's name.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
But Carrie is, her married name is Hulan. She live, they live out where they live.
Well, she's daughter.
Yeah.
She inherited the place.
Yes, yes. So, yeah, that's awesome. That's getting all of that.
Nice.
Okay, on to the council homework.
Well, you're known your docks, right? I'm not that dark.
Well, I put the docks are, yeah, they're complete.
Ninety-five percent.
Chain them in.
We got to cable them in.
Cable, get a scuba diver.
How do we? Yeah.
I'm going to put an ad on Facebook.
Yeah.
Hey, are you a local that's a certified scuba diver? Did you talk to someone at the lake? Please give me a call at City Hall and just see. Because some woman talked to Dale and said, oh, I'm a cert, certified scuba, scuba diver. And he's like, you should call City Hall because I just need someone I can, oh, fam.
You ever call?
No, take our cable or chain or whatever we come up with and go take it to this anchor and that anchor.
Well, speaking of the docks.
What?
I'm, I'm recognizing
Oh.
Council Norman and Ed Toss as Citizens of the Month of January. I've already talked to Ed. So I'm informing you now that on the twenty-first Tuesday, you're going to be recognized as Citizens of the Month of January. Thank you for all the work.
Yes.
Donald.
Had you not had all that equipment?
Yeah.
It wouldn't have happened.
We'd have been scratching.
Yeah.
It's been
Right.
Well, I had to give somebody a bad time because that big forklift. I went to Portland and got.
Yeah.
And I've had it. He said, just come and get it and use it.
Yeah.
Probably fifteen years. Finally said, I said, what am I going to do to take care of this debt? No, you just can have it.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Nice. The job done.
Right, definitely.
She wasn't a real beauty, but she got the job done.
Yes.
That's the most important thing.
So the other three pages are kind of things that I would like council to, to plant a seeds for council for you guys to be thinking about it so that we can make some determinations. So the first one is you guys coming up with a street philosophy. So using gas tax funding and SCA funding. After this next round, all the streets will be in fairer, better condition. So now we're kind of at a loss. Staffs always, we've had this kind of process we've been going through where we identify. We put a list together. We do the ones that meet criteria. We do it. Next, next, next. Now we're out of them. Other than state and NOT and bigger projects, we, Louisiana would be a bigger project. We don't really have these little so we, yeah, so we want to know from you guys. Are you wanting us to use the SCA app? Twenty-twenty-five, we're doing the last of the little streets, but in the twenty-twenty-seven app, are we trying to go for a bigger street and just chunk it down? Are you guys want, what's our streets philosophy? Because we don't know now. Now that they're all in a good condition, they're going to be. Where do we go now? Or is it that you want us to use the grant funding to bust out State Street, NOT Street, Louisiana?
No.
What do we want to do? So kind of just planting the seed for you guys. Because we already have the twenty-twenty-five finalized stuff. You know, we're doing work on Washington, Madison, different things. But then we're going to kind of run out of of the process we've been doing. So we want council to kind of direct us and this is what we would like. So that's one.
Okay, before we leave this one.
Yes.
On Jefferson and Madison, they both, where they meet forty-seventh are just gaitering out and starting to dip dead.
Yes, so that's in the SCA. Madison is You're in the next round. Robert's got a plan for us to do stuff. They're going to come do the ramps, right?
Let them get that.
Do that. And then probably what we're going to end up doing is cutting all the way across. Excavating, making sure nothing's wrong and then rebuilding the strata because what Robert thinks is happening is a combo. He thinks the hill already has moisture come down that way. And then people are coming and just slamming on the brakes. And so that's causing like liquefaction under there and it's just breaking down, breaking down. Because we've tested for chlorine, they haven't found chlorine in that water that sometimes sits there in the summer. Because we were like, oh, it's a water leak. But he thinks it's just ground table water or somebody this, the other thing I was going to ask Jerry and Elmer at that building is where are your downspouts? Because if they're going into some foundation drain or something, then they're only increasing the problem where the water is getting trapped at the base. So we're going to kind of, that's in the SCA for next year. And then Jefferson and then Washington where it's all chowdered by the old pine cone, that sidewalk's just pummeled to nothing. And that road hap, like a swath of that road is just pummeled too. So that's get, there's, Ben's going to be bringing that to council. Kind of here's what we're planning for the next application.
So Jerry and Elmer's water come off of the back of the building.
Okay.
And the way they put that ramp in, it's running across that ramp. And when we get freezing weather, a sheet of ice.
For what?
Okay. So, yeah, they need to appropriately dispose of that roof.
So that water, I mean, they are putting it out into the street. But
It's
if we get any moisture with this cold weather.
Yeah.
There's going to be sheets of ice and people could be fogged.
Yeah.
And then another goofy thing. Last winter, we had the cold weather, the JCPenney building, they put the gas furnaces in and the moisture dripped out of them. It froze, overflowed because it goes into the
Oh, and that's what they, they had that leak in the bottom bathroom?
Well, it had that issue. I think they had a pipe collapse or something.
Okay.
But on the side of the building, you'll see the white pipe and it's from the gas furnaces.
Condensation, yeah.
Yeah, and it goes into the rain drain from the roof. That goes under, but it froze and then it overflowed and the sidewalk was a sheet of ice.
Yeah, your condensation line, I don't think it should be outside when, if it's just dripping, that's just building like a ice dam if it's
Yeah. I mean, not often does it happen, but but last winter, both those places, it was a disaster.
Okay.
I mean.
Joe and Nina, Jerry and Elmer, what is
Yeah, Ben was saying there in the front of your street there, that there was no crown in the street and the water's going to the center.
Yeah, so that would get solved too with the
And not going to the storm drains out of there. So
Well, he said they could see, they could see it sheeting straight down, like coming at them like a wall, which is what happened on Cherry. I don't know if you guys remember, we had it coming down and then it turned into the guy's driveway and we had to do the berm
Yeah.
across. But, yeah, yeah.
So
So one of the other things that we wanted to also add into the streets philosophy was the idea of maybe doing a test of chip seal over asphalt. And seeing if that, if we have a good asphalted road, does that add, do a couple longevity tests? So our thoughts are
I love it. Street, First Street might be a good
Yeah, you could test
One to do that on.
Yeah. The other places they wanted to test were Jefferson from Terry Nims's house to the park.
Yeah.
Because that gets a lot of in-traffic.
Yeah.
And then the other place where we have a good road, but it experiences trouble is the Crown of the Hill on Rose. When you go over the hill, that. So that might be something. But this is all just for you guys to plant seeds and we think
Jos, that would you like, let's have a scheduled workshop for this?
Yeah.
Streets philosophy?
Yeah. I think so.
Does that look like
Yeah.
you want us to do that?
Yeah.
And I guess I can add another circus to the water issue up there.
What is it?
Perry and Elmer, when they had the inn.
Yes.
They put a blacktop berm from the parking lot to the street and the water comes out, runs down the street and goes into the corner basin. When it's raining, go up there and watch how all that water runs.
Okay. Madison is trouble.
And I think it's starting because that Shea is starting to crack and the water's starting to go in those cracks. We're going to be losing it.
Okay. What the heck? Yeah.
Those are things I see. I'm just bringing them up to you.
I put them on the list.
You know.
Yeah. Well, if we can solve it before we have some problem.
Right.
Yeah.
And I think these are other two.
Let me tell you on streets. What do you see? Which street out of NOT Street? State Street? And the Weed Avenue, which one would you guys think is most priority at this point?
State.
Yeah, I would say State.
I'd say State.
It's the hottest used
I, I'd really like to concentrate on State.
Actually in his proposed grant.
Yeah.
They're going to do the bottom section. Uh, bottom of the hill. They're going to do the bottom section, bottom of the hill this way. I don't know if it went, I don't remember, did it go to about D Street?
Yeah, I thought it was to D.
They're going to repave that because I, you know, they've already kind of pushed this to Public Works Committee, because part of what's maybe missing here.
I only, I had to synopsize you and Ben.
Yeah.
What's probably not every...
Is there is the possibility of these bigger projects of getting different funding sources, but we're really not sure of them yet. And there's a certain amount of skin in the game and we don't know what that percentage is. And that's why, partly is why the gas tax funding that we can accumulate, you know, do we hold that?
Yeah.
And be able to get a grant? And I mean, even if it was 50/50, if somebody were...
Double our money.
You double on your money, would that, you know, but we're trying to wrap our head, we'll have a meeting this month, we're trying to wrap our head what makes the most sense to approach these projects. Because to approach State Street, to do everything we want to do, that's, that's, well, it'd be six.
Yeah.
Funding cycles. We're talking 12 years.
Yeah.
To knock that out, to do it section by section at a quarter of a million. Well, it'd be.
Yeah.
Fine.
Yeah.
But by the time we got to inflation, it would be.
Well, and that's why Sheila from Public Works is looking at what are all the funding options out there? Because, and then the second thing is setting aside gas tax, because we've talked about having some money set aside for skin in the game, for us to do stuff when we find a project and it works and they're already mobilized out here and we want this one little thing added, we'd have money to just say, add this to the contract. How we've done it up until now is just spend everything and set aside no reserve.
Pouring all of our money, tapping into the SCA and...
Doing what we can, yeah.
And the other part of this is Ben and I the other day, when we were beating this around a little in our heads. It's like, okay, we got to change our philosophy here because we've been playing catch up.
Yeah.
Well, after this next cycle, we don't have any more streets other than State Street.
Right.
But we don't have any more of our other little streets that are going to be in that marginal poor condition. They're all going to be good or fair, excellent category.
Yeah.
With our criteria. So now we're kind of, now we're going, okay, now we're entering maintenance mode, other than, and maintenance mode with this big project component.
Yeah.
So what does that look like?
Because we don't want it...
It's going to change. That's why we're proposing doing some chip seal. We'll take a, and what did he say? This is fair?
I think it's fair, right?
It's an upper level fair street and do it some chip seal and see how that holds up over time. Because we're thinking, you know, that chip seal, if that pans, that buys us so much more time. Once we get down to the marginal condition, then it's a repave.
Yeah.
No more. We, some of these ones we chip sealed.
They need to be repaved.
Probably won't do that strategy again on those.
Yeah.
When they fall into that kind of condition, when they're starting to pothole out and having issues.
Makes sense to start over.
Start over.
But part of our concern as staff is we've been go, go, going, and now it's like going to be like, after 26, we're going to be like...
And they don't know quite how to approach it. I mean, now, none of us do either.
Yeah.
Many years of these projects and finally got funding to get them done and got them done all at once.
Yeah.
Now everybody, oh, now what do we do?
I know, I know. I don't want to leave money on the table.
No.
If we can figure out in, at the state, I don't, if, even if it takes me five cycles to do not, and that's all I have to do or whatever, okay. I just don't want to leave money on the table. We should fight for our share of everything we pay in taxes.
And it could be, you know, we're sinking 200 grand.
Yeah.
Into State Street, every cycle at 50 grand, doing chip seal maintenance up, you know, keeping on these others. If that strategy works, if you get you another 10 years.
Right.
15 years, then you're way ahead of the game.
Yeah.
On the chip seal, what, how do they charge on that?
A square foot.
Oh, it's a lot cheaper. It's like...
Like 70 cents a square foot.
Wow. So...
About three bucks.
Oh, yeah. 343 is I think what our concrete was, or asphalt was. Yeah, sorry.
Is that just one layer chip seal or two?
That's a single layer, but we've also talked about that, is they do do a double layer and they did do that on the alleyways.
Yes.
On the hill.
Yeah.
They double coated, so.
You could have it doubled and it's still half as much as asphalt.
Yeah.
I think that will be another benefit.
Yeah. So maybe we, we do one test, it's a single layer, one that's a double layer, and then just longevity it out and see what happens.
Monitor the traffic.
Yeah.
Monitor the traffic.
And then just see the wear pattern, is it, you know, what's it doing? So that's, that's, those are the two streets things. The third thing that you have to take home for your homework is Wana. So now that Weed Avenue, the sewer stuff's done.
God, we own all the parking.
And, yeah, we do. The Old Railroad Grade got dedicated to the city of Renonia from the Batmans. And this is just a mock-up design. Robert's got, using the Old Railroad Grade as an exit road and using the current weed as an in. This would be one way in, one way out. But you can see there that we could give Wana their parking and still stay in the platted. If that, on Robert's thing, you see kind of like where...
Looks like there's a little island there that he went around.
Yeah, like a tree, went around the tree. And so that line would be where kind of Wana property would be, Tree South or whatever, if that makes sense.
So.
And then you got to figure out, oh, go ahead.
Is that the property line then, Josette? For Wana?
What they, what we were talking about, yeah, from that black line down to the highway, right?
So, oh, here. Here's the right of way that we just got.
Because that kind of lines up with where they're parking, right?
But that's ours now.
It's all ours. This would be the portion we were talking about.
Pretty clear where the property line is. This one's too much stuff. It's blurry.
It still leaves the exit of weed as a 60 foot.
Oh, it's still.
Yeah.
The way it is now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We would...
So we don't really lose anything. They just have...
Like coming this way.
And give Wana this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Or sell it to them, or they do the street frontage improvement, you know, because they, right when we started the sewer project, I got hit by Pam. She came over and asked, what, what can we do, blah, blah, blah? And I was like, well, let me do the sewer project, then we can talk. I have to take it to council and the things. And then like the next day, the head of Wana.
Bob.
Bob came in and he's like, what can we do? And I'm like, okay.
They're going to build a new branch?
Or go up.
Oh.
I think you look at all their other branches, they're two-story.
Oh.
So I don't know what their plan is. They also have this, is it going to show here? They also own.
Fasto.
Yeah.
This lot here, which they also own this little piece. So they could use this little lot on Columbia as their frontage and come in backwards and just have a house that aimed at the street, because otherwise Wana would, or that, or they have to do frontage improvements on our new weed, this side of weed.
Yeah.
So they're trying to come up with what they're doing. Council needs to be thinking, prescriptively, they've been using that parking for years.
Yeah.
But I don't, I think there's been money put into design and like, there's a whole bunch of sewer, like sewer comes out of this house, this, it's like bisects, like four things of sewer, so I paid...
There's utilities that are fouling things.
Yes, they're going to have to move. So I paid Robert, our engineer, I said, no matter what they do on their property, what do we want it to look like in the right of way? So he designed where, for us, where we would require them to come in. Say they want to reconfigure their lines to be able, because right now they truly can't put a building right here because there's lines under it. They're going to have to move something. But when we go to give this parking lot to them or sell it to them or whatever, I kind of need to, I'm trying to work with Ruben on figuring out how I don't have to put it out to the public.
Oh, yeah.
Because we don't want some rando bidding Wana for their thing. And I think because it has a prescriptive use for years, and we're working with the lawyer, how do we legitimately not break public law, but not have to go out and like put it on the market for anyone to be able to buy Wana's parking lot, like...
Josette, that empty lot, is that where they built that new home?
Yes.
Yeah.
There's a house there now, yeah. So this is the third one, the third homework assignment.
Right here, Dennis, when we were looking at the sewer, somewhere in here, there's a sewer line that comes down through that property.
Right diagonal across.
Yeah.
Yeah, where you can see it.
Isn't there a manhole?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this map here, yeah. This one's kind of fuzzy, but it shows the manhole and it shows the lines there.
Yeah. Kind of crisscross and not a good conducive place to build.
I see the proposals to move the line back on that other lot, come down the hill.
Yeah. So we'll move our stuff and then if they move their stuff, they, we now have a plan for how they'll hook into the weed side. But that's kind of what I need you guys thinking about, because we got gifted it, but we've incurred expense on it and Wana's like a corporation. So we don't want to just be like, you can have it for free. But I don't want to make them do market price either, because if they're going to spend money developing their building and doing the frontage improvements, which would be triggered by their update of their building, that's a benefit to all of us too. So we got to kind of be, not rip people off, but not lose our shorts either.
So are we the owners of that?
Yes, the city is.
It's all been, yeah.
Deeded over.
Title company.
So that's your third seed planted to think about.
Wow.
And then the only other thing that isn't on our list, because it really wasn't our project, but I wanted to update you guys on, was remember Rachel Organ Citizen wrote a grant to get senior exercise equipment put in Spencer Park, which we have all of those items. And then I got an extension on the grant till November. We'll have them in the spring, but that way we don't foul up their grant. But it's two benches, one's a dip bench, which has like bent metal so that seniors can practice getting in and out of different height chairs. So like it has short handles and then a seat where it's tall handles. There's a, like a exercise bike, they're all outdoor grade. There's like a rowing machine and then there's one that works, like it's a big circle with these things. You go like this, you hold on to it and you follow this pattern and it's, works for seniors doing shoulder rotation. This is all going to be around the five trees that are right at the end of the long jump there by the snack shack. There's like a grove of five trees. And it's going to kind of meander in and out of those five trees like an amoeba. And then the different elements will be on the outside of the loop. So you could come as a senior and walk the path for exercise. You could do the stations, you could sit on a bench while your friend walks the path. But she got a grant to buy all these items if the city was willing to put them in, in the park for senior citizens. We did also put two elements over at the senior building. We did a balance bar, so we had a fabricator make like basically a ballet bar for them to practice lunging down and they do all the different things in their exercise class. And then we also painted their agility ladder on their back sidewalk in like traffic paint, so they can practice the way they practice agility with their steps. In their class, they lay out a like physical rope ladder, but they wanted that painted there for when seniors couldn't get somewhere, they could do their thing outside. So that's just one project that is on the city's list, because it's not a city project, but we're doing it. And that's all the stuff I have. Anyone have any, any que, I mean, tonight questions? Otherwise, if you think about stuff, you can always call me or email me or...
It looks like we...
Shrinking.
I think the login and member plan and fund management, one work session.
Yeah. Oh, I think so, yeah.
And then we had another work session.
The streets and all that.
Streets and philosophy.
So.
So maybe put on Stephanie's list, couple schedules.
For...
Yeah.
Get it done during these winter months, guys.
Yeah.
Summer gets busy.
Yeah.
On if we want to log this summer.
Yeah, we need to do our, get all our ducks in the road, do a no app, do the things.
You got your little log eventually, you know how to do those.
Yeah, I even got my own hammer.
Yeah, you got somebody to help you on logging permit now.
No, actually Mark does all the permitting. That's Mark's.
Yeah.
But it's pretty simple.
Yeah. No, I've done it. And we, the city has its own hammer. What the heck?
Yeah, we got our own brand.
Really?
Yeah.
What is it?
I don't know, I'd have to look at it again.
Is it a letter?
No, it's like a V with something on it. It's an old brand that Bruce had the hammer and we tweaked it and we registered it. I don't know what we did. We tweaked the design and...
An old CZ one.
I don't think it's CZ. It's something V. We use the V that already existed and we did something else.
If it was a W, they cut the one side.
Yeah.
As long as they registered it.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, Dad used to have pretty grand, ever too.
Question on Weed Avenue.
Yeah.
In, out.
It's not a promise. It's just his idea.
But that's just...
That's his idea.
Idea.
Streamline it for the people, because I mean, the people right at the entrance, they get everything, both ways. I didn't know, I didn't know, he proposed it. I said, well, we'll have to pitch it to the residents, because if they hate it, council's not going to go for it. But I was just, you was thinking, maybe we could get two streets to not break down as quick as if we could separate the traffic to one lane.
So, and maybe you don't want to talk about it. My, my first question is, is the people that live right here at the beginning.
Yeah.
Do they have to go all the way down around?
No, she said they go both ways.
Yeah. I think it would go both ways. Most people, the people coming from Fairway are always going, if it's a new railroad grade road, I would take that 100 times quicker than I'd take the hill.
Yeah.
But the people that live closest are probably just going to, meow, and no one's even going to. And it's wide enough that it's not like a one lane too. So...
This one would definitely be one.
Yes, but the other one could still probably be two-way if someone, so that we wouldn't have people violating. But those people, it'd just be easier just to go the one.
But you wouldn't have, it would be on Fairway taking the two-way.
Yeah.
Cut down on the traffic.
Traffic down, especially with new development.
Yeah. So yeah, that's all the stuff I have.
Any other question?
You got a head picket?
Yeah.
You're like, what, you got, what did I get myself into?
Well, it gives you a little bit better idea of what we do.
Yeah, right.
Well, I'll be honest, there's a lot more here than I thought. I mean, seriously.
Didn't know what we were doing. You just thought we were hanging out over here.
Yeah, I mean, you guys are having a big party then.
Let's list it one time.
It had 47 on it at the beginning.
Yeah.
And then it got down to 35.
Yeah. Now it's like 20.
27.
Even less than 28, because there's the first five numbers checked out.
Yeah.
Are you adjourning so I can?
I am. I'll adjourn this at 7:00 or 8:37, meeting adjourned.
Cool.